All right, we are going to call our meeting to order. It is August 22, 2020. Our meetings are being livestreamed on Macey Web TV. We also put public comment via email or email to the Commissioners' office, or you can give us a call at 3604279670, extension 419. And let's go ahead. And Ross, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, Ross.
Welcome.
Now ask the clerk to place call roll.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
Present.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schute is absent. Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
Present. Thank you. We're going to move on to item number four, correspondence with organizational business. Do we have any correspondence to report?
Yes. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: A liquor license application for Spencer Lake Grocery, and a change of location application for Wilbur Industries, a marijuana and liquor license that is due to expire, and a change of cooperative participants for the Mason County Senior Activity Center, and a notification of pending marijuana extraction operation for PT Enterprises. Received a letter from John and Karen Belford regarding the North Shore Road electronic speed sign. Ken Van Beskirk sent in a letter to encourage the Commission to incorporate public comment via Zoom for their meetings. The Federal Regulatory Commission sent in a letter regarding notification of modification of impoundment elevation, Article 405. A letter was received from Tracy Beck regarding a vacancy on the Mason Transit Authority Board. Department of Ecology sent in a letter congratulating the Commissioners on receiving the wastewater treatment plant outstanding performance award for the Russell Wood Wastewater Treatment Plant. And Stephen Payne sent in an application for the Parks and Trails Advisory Board.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item 4.2, there's been an announcement of the reunification parade. This Judge Finley is inviting the Board to participate in a reunification parade at noon on August 27th. This will take place in the alley between the modular courtroom and juvenile building. This is to celebrate families reuniting with their children through dependency court. I've attended some of these before, and it is just amazing. So I'm excited to be there on the 27th. Let's move on to item 4.3, news release. Ross, could you read the release for us?
I sure will. Thank you. Good morning Commissioners and viewers. There is a news release going out August 25, 2020, for a temporary closure of MCR A Park for irrigation system replacement. Mason County will be temporarily closing MCR A Park located at 2100 East Johns Prairie Road, Shelton, starting August 25, 2020, until January 1, 2021, in order to replace the in-ground irrigation system on all seven baseball diamond outfield and reseating of the fields. Due to there being open trenches, large equipment, and electrical work being performed in MCR A Park, we are asking that you refrain from using the park during this project. Citizen's safety is a top priority for the county, and we would appreciate compliance with the temporary park closure and ask all residents to avoid entering the park. No events have been scheduled on these days to assist the citizens with their safety. For more information, please contact Mason County Parks and Trails Office at 3604279670, extension 355. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ross.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Moving on to item number five. This is open forum for citizens' input. And due to the COVID outbreak at this time, we're suspending input. However, we do accept comment via email. You can send that to dlz@co.mason.wa.us. Come mail it to the Commissioners' office at 411 North Fifth Street, Shelton, Washington, 98584, or give us a call at 3604279670, extension 419. And of course, we will revisit this on a weekly basis. We are also working on additional options to have people participate, have our public participate via Zoom. Pretty cool, if you ask me. Now move on to item number six, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for adoption of the agenda as presented. Oh, actually, I take that back. Madam Chair, I'd like to make an addition. Move for adoption of the agenda with an addition of an item 8.23 to read, move to set a public hearing on 9/22 at 9:15 a.m. to consider a new offer for parcel for property 410 East Hillcrest Drive.
Okay, and I will second. All in favor? Aye. And the motion is approved. Moving on to item number seven, approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the August 4, 2020 regular meeting minutes as presented.
And I will second that. And we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes for August 4, 2020, regular meeting minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion approved. Move on to item number eight. This is adoption of today's action agenda. Commissioners will read the items on the action agenda. Commissioners or members of the public can ask the questions and/or have the item removed for a separate discussion and vote. I will read items 8.1 through 8.11. Commissioner Netherland, if you could read items 8.12 through item 8.23. All right, approval of the licensing agreement with Gelota to complete lead grant requirements. Item 8.2, approval for the Chair to sign the ERP client partnership agreement with Tyler Technologies in order to use the county's financial system munis to its fullest potential. Item 8.3, approval to appoint Karen Wolf to the Lewis-Mason-Thurston Area Agency on aging for a two-year term ending August 25, 2022. Item 8.4, approval to appoint Kevin Frankie Berger, member, and Brenda Hershey, alternate member, to the Mason County Board of Equalization for a term of September 1, 2020, through May 31, 2023. Item 8.5, approval for the Division of Emergency Management, TEM Manager, to sign the fiscal year 20 emergency management performance grant, EMPG, supplemental contract E20-250. Item 8.6, approval of the January 2019 through December 2021 collective bargaining agreement for Teamsters Union Local Number 252, representing Mason General Services staff. Item 8.7, approval to set a hearing on October 6, 2020, at 9:15 to consider approving the franchise agreement application between Mason County and Blue Heron Condominium Association franchise agreement application, granting permission to have their existing utility line and along or Nobles Road and under and across Dalby Road. Item 8.8, approval of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, in the amount of $102,225 for public services through Community Action Council of Lewis-Mason and Thurston County to low and moderate income persons in Lewis and Mason Counties that serve up to 7,700 people, and allow Frank Pinter's Support Services Director to sign the grant agreement on behalf of Mason County. Item 8.9, approval of warrants, claims clearing fund warrants number 8073879 through 8074193, in the amount of $1,629,516.44. Direct deposit fund warrants numbers 70329 through 70724, in the amount of $750,132.43. Salary clearing fund warrants number 7005337 through 7005372, in the amount of $1,025,181.58. Item 8.10, approval to enter into contract with Department of Commerce for the eviction rent assistance program, grant number 21-4164C-117, and to subcontract funds to Crossroads Housing, Shelton Family Center, and North Mason Resources. Item 8.11, approval of adding one full-time employee, FTE, to the planning department to hire as a planner, one, two, or three, and assign lead building inspector.
Item 8.12, approval of replacing the permanent assistance center manager and planning manager for a deputy director of the Department of Community Development. Item number 8.13, approval to set a hearing on Tuesday, September 22, 2020, at 9:15 a.m. to consider the sale of parcel 32021-56-02030, located at 580 East Wood Lane, Shelton, Washington, 98584. Offer has been received by Janice and Charles Morgan in the amount of $5,500. Item number 8.14, approval authorized Mason County Motor Pool to declare certain vehicles and equipment parts as surplus and allow motor pool to dispose pursuant to Mason County Code and state laws. Item number 8.15, approval to set a public hearing on October 6, 2020, at 9:15 a.m. to allow public to comment on the recommended code changes to Chapter 10.34, Unmuffled Compression Brakes. Item 8.16, approval to set a public hearing, October 6, 2020, 9:15 a.m. to allow public comment on the recommended code changes for Chapter 12.20, Vacation of Roads. Item 8.17, approval to authorize the Deputy Director of Public Works Utility and Waste Management to proceed with a request for proposal for solid waste and recycled material hauling. Item 8.18, approval to authorize the Deputy Director of Public Works Utilities and Waste Management to execute an extension of the contract with Mason County Garbage and additional six months. Item 8.19, approval to approve and execute the resolution set in the hearing date with the hearings examiner for Wednesday, October 14, 2020, at 1 p.m. to consider public comment on the petition for vacation of a portion of Roy Bode Road right-ofways that lays within the property lines of assessor parcel number 12328-23-00011. Item 8.20, approval of a new resolution, replacing Resolution 2020-59 and setting a new hearing date for the hearings examiner on Wednesday, October 14, 2020, at 1 p.m. to consider public comment on a petition to vacate a portion of the north half of First Street adjacent to block eight, lots 21 through 28, in the plot of Grace Harbor and Union City Railroad addition to Union City Road Vacation Number 406. Item number 8.21, approval to award the request for proposals, RFP, for contracted services to conduct outreach and education and provide participant technical assistance for the grant-funded Building Connections Strengthening Businesses in Mason County. Project Economic Development Council, $10,000, and North Mason Chamber of Commerce, $10,000, and signed the agreements. Item 8.22, approval to sign a sub-recipient agreement with Community Action Council of Lewis-Mason and Thurston Counties for the service provision under a public service Washington State Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. Item number 8.23, move to to put forward another public hearing on 9/22 at 9:15 a.m. to consider a new offer for the property located at 410 East Hillcrest Drive.
Having read through a lot of items on the action agenda, are there any that we would like to remove for separate discussion and vote?
Madam Chair, if we could please remove item number 8.12, item number 8.16, and item number 8.19 for further discussion, a separate vote.
All right. So we have a motion. Oh, and I'll second that. We have a motion in a second to approve the action agenda and remove items 8.12, 8.16, and 8.19 for separate discussion and vote.
One comment, if I may?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I want to thank Kevin Frankie Berger and Brenda Hershey for stepping up. It's a very, very important board for our county. I also want to thank everybody involved with the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters. Our staff was incredible and excellent, but the Teamsters and their willingness to work with us during tough times is also very highly appreciated.
I would agree with that. I'd also like to welcome Karen Wolf to the Lewis-Mason-Thurston Area Agency on Aging. It's a great group of people, and I look forward to working with Karen. All right, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Madam Chair, if I may, on the item number 8.12, if I may introduce it so we could just remove it for lack of emotion?
Yes, please.
Okay, item number 8.2 reads approval of replacing the permanent assistance center manager and planning manager for Deputy Director and Department of Community Development. They're not quite ready for this item, so I would ask that no motion be made, and it just goes on for lack of emotion.
All right, so we will remove item 8.12 for lack of emotion. Let's move on to item 8.16. Approval to set a public hearing on October 6, 2020, at 9:15 a.m. to allow public comment on the recommended code changes to Chapter 12.20, Vacation of Roads. Do we have staff available for public works?
I see him.
Hello. I missed the comment.
Would it be appropriate to include item 8.19 at this time, or shall we say keep those separate?
Item 8.19. We would like to move forward with that. It's just following the RCW to set a public hearing for the Roy Bode vacation request. So it's not making a decision upon it at this point in time. It's just setting a hearing, and so we'd like to move forward.
Commissioner, I think probably it's the time to read Ken Van Beskirk's comments, because he referenced both of those items.
All right, I can read that right now. It was sent on August 25 at 5:30 a.m. He's an early bird. That was just my comment. That was not part of his email. So this is his email. I would like to ask that items 8.16 and item 8.19 be removed and considered as separate items. I would also like to ask that the Board consider that both items be tabled until the future meeting, so I and others can be better informed and have discussion with county staff that what the recommended code changes are regarding item 8.16, Vacation of Roads, and how it might relate and affect item 8.19, the current petition for the vacation of Roy Bode Road right-ofway. I know that the applicant's attorney has had discussions with the staff. Has the applicant been informed of what the code changes are and are not the public? I am very disappointed that I and others were not kept informed of item 8.19, as I have repeatedly requested to be kept informed. And then the item was just added to the consent agenda yesterday at the briefing. Please investigate what happened before you set a date before the hearing examiner, as I feel obligated to bring it to his attention as part of the record. I did receive an apology from Mrs. Swanson late or last evening. However, I feel this matter deserves more discussion before it goes to the hearing examiner. Thank you, Ken Van Beskirk, author. So Mike, can you go into a little bit more detail on item 8.16 and 8.19?
Okay, 8.16 is concerning the compensation for vacating unopened right-ofways. And we were directed by the Board a few, about a month ago, to investigate other counties and how their policies are concerning this. We checked with about a dozen other counties, and we came up with a good group of similar counties and similar sizes and similar activities. So Cloud County, Grace Harbor County, Jefferson, and Kitsap all have the same format of charging 50% of the assessor's value for compensation for vacating unopen right-ofways or easements. So we are recommending to the Board to set a public hearing to assess whether this is the procedure we want to take moving forward. And then as that would affect item 8.19, no, all the previous requests for vacations, we're going to follow the current codes for Mason County. And so this 8.16 would not affect that.
All right, do we have questions through the Commission?
No, I have some comments.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Now, Commissioner, discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm one of the reasons why this was brought forward. As many know, I have a great issue with giving away something of value that the county owns or the people own for free. And so historically, I quite often vote against releasing these right-ofways and giving those properties to people without some type of compensation. Our staff has done a great job by going out and looking for ways to find just compensation in order to get the people their value for whatever is given out. So with that, this is also just a hearing. This does not actually put it into effect. And I have no problem with setting the hearing date, so these things can go ahead and move forward, and then we can have the full discussions on the merit of the issue.
All right, great. And I would agree with you. I think that this is a great move forward. And I think it's going to make it better for the county and for everyone involved. All right, shall we move on to item 8.16?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move for approval. Item number 8.16, approval to set a public hearing on October 6, 2020, at 9:15 a.m. to allow public comment on the recommended code changes to Chapter 12.20, Vacation of Roads.
Yeah, I will second. So we have a motion in a second for approval to set a public hearing on October 6, 2020, at 9:15 a.m. to allow public comment on the recommended code changes to Chapter 12.20, Vacation of Roads. All in favor, motion or signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Moving on to item 8.19. Do I have a motion?
You don't want to have further discussion on it, Madam Chair, from him? I'll make the motion, and then we can have further discussion. Madam Chair, I move for approval to approve and execute resolution set in the hearing date with the hearings examiner for Wednesday, October 14, 2020, at 1 p.m. to consider public comment on the petition for vacation of a portion of Roy Bode Road right-ofway that lays within the property lines of assessor parcel number 12328-23-00011.
Yeah, I will second that. Now, do we have further questions or discussion?
I'll go ahead and move some discussion into it, Madam Chair. Again, this is not passing or agreeing to it. There's no secret that I have not been a fan of this one. But after talking and listening to staff and recommendations, I am supportive of moving it forward to the hearings examiner, at which time, if it is found to not be favorable, it will end there. If it is found to be favorable, it will come back to the Commission for a decision from the Commission. With that being said, Madam Chair, I will be supporting the motion.
All right. Thank you. And I would encourage everyone or those interested parties to please attend the hearing. Well, it is going to be set for Wednesday, October 14, at 1. So we have a motion and a second for approval to approve and execute the resolution setting a hearing date with the hearing examiner for Wednesday, October 14, 2020, at 1 p.m. to consider public comment on the petition for vacation of a portion of Roy Bode Road right-ofway that lays between the property lines of assessor parcel number 12328-23-00011. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Do we have any department heads or elected officials in the Zoom room or in the chambers that would like to address the Commission? Seeing no hands or nobody popping up? Let's move on to item number 10. The public hearing. We have two hearings and ask staff to come forward to present. We'll start with item 10.1.
Thank you, Commissioners. 10.1 is a public hearing for the 410 East Hillcrest Drive Surplus Property Sale. I'd like to ask that we close this with no action as the purchasers have rescinded their offer.
Okay, do we have any questions for staff? All right, so we will close the hearing on item 10.
Madam Chair, I move that we close the hearing with no action.
Great, thank you. I'll second that. So there is a motion in a second to close the hearing on item 10.1 for 410 East Hillcrest Drive Surplus Property. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item 10.2. This is a public hearing to apply to the Department of Commerce via the Zoom Grant Application Process for the CARES Act, CDBG CV1 Coronavirus Grant, and request Chair signature on recipient agreement. Ask staff to come forward to present.
Thank you, Commissioners. The CARES Act has offered to Department of Commerce through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, the opportunity to extend CARES funding to Lewis and Mason Counties and the cities within Lewis and Mason County. Additional funds, $597,614, to assist the citizens of both the counties and the cities in grants for public services, public health, emergency response, temporary housing facilities that address COVID-19 impacts. The CDBG fund activities must benefit low-to-moderate income persons or meet the CDBG urgent need national objective criteria. The grant is the grant process requires application on September 3, and we're looking for authorization for the Director to apply for the grant via the Zoom Grant Application Process for what's called the CDBG CV1 Coronavirus Grant.
Great. Do we have any discussion or questions for staff? No? All right, do we have a discussion? Commissioner, discussion? I would like to say that we definitely appreciate the grants that Mason County has been receiving. They are helping our residents in this critical time. So I do appreciate all the work by all of our team members. And And look forward to moving forward on these on these things. Anything else?
I'm sure I like those same feelings. It's fantastic, the job that our staff is doing. They're able to keep pulling out more and more money and able to help our community. And you and I both know, there are so many out there that really, really need it. This is not a game or joke or just a feel-good thing. Some of these things are really, really helping people in a way that most people couldn't even imagine. With that being said, Madam Chair, with your permission, I would like to move that we authorize Frank Pinter Pinter of Support Services Director to apply to the Department of Commerce via Zoom Grant Application Process. For the CARES Act, CDBG's CV dash one coronavirus grant and request chair signature on sub-recipient agreement.
And I will second that. So we have a motion in a second for Frank Pinter. To apply to the Department of Commerce via the Zoom Grant Application Process for the CARES Act. CDBG CV one coronavirus grant and request chair signature on sub-recipient agreement. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Fantastic. What a what a day. Oh goodness. All right, let's move on to item number eleven, border ports and calendar.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, could I have you go first on that? As you've seen, mine is broken. I remember some of it, but it'll help to make sure that we do not attend meetings together without it being noticed. If you'll go first and I can jump on and write them down.
I can absolutely do that. So as a reminder to everyone, our next meeting will be a briefing on August thirty first. Our next commission meeting will be, or sorry, September eighth. So this afternoon, I have a tour with the Salmon Enhancement Center. Tomorrow, we have our EOC. Our COVID meeting. I have Turning Point. Just a real quick, my daughter Amber and son Michael's anniversary is on Thursday. We have the reunification parade. I have a conference call regarding some litigation. On Friday, again, we have the EOC meeting. And then we're back here for our briefing on Monday. And then I will be going on a tour. Oh, and then we also have our EOC meeting in the morning, COVID relief meeting. Via WASAC on or at noon. I'll be taking a tour of our roads with the public works, the fine people, public works. We have a school resources meeting at two. Then let's see, we have a chambers meeting on Thursday, the at the third. Or we are other weekly, bi-weekly, I guess, WASAC COVID meeting. Monday, the seventh is Labor Day, so we have no meetings that day. And then we are back here on Tuesday for our commission meetings. And there could be meetings in between there as this is a work in progress and it seems like daily things change and they change quickly. Oh, I also, oh, no, never mind. Oh, my goodness, these calendars are crazy, aren't they? All right. Go ahead. Sorry about that.
So Madam Chair, I do know I had my worker meetings and my finance committee meetings, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization meetings or regular briefings. I met with members of the community for many different things. We have coming up together briefings. I will have a left board meeting. Why were fifteen meeting? We will both be attending the area command meetings. I will also be at the reunification parade briefings. I'll be attending the COVID webinars and the North Mason Chamber of Commerce meetings. Along with others, if there's any type of conflict, we'll make sure that it gets out.
Absolutely. Right. Well, this has been a fun day. Let's move on to item number twelve.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
We adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you all.